Good evening. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my honor to call to order this June 2nd, uh, 6th, meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. And I would ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Sipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you please join the city council and me in the place of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize our Sergeant-at-Arms tonight is Lieutenant Kevin Burns. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Folks, we have an agenda tonight comprised of 10 zoning petitions as an item related to the Energy, Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2021, and as well as an item related to boards and commissions. When the zoning petitions are called, the public will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the city council will consider the item. If there's opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Copies of the agenda, as well as videos of our previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, it's my understanding that Councilmember Mundy and Councilmember Larson would like to continue items Z2 and Z10 respectively. So I would entertain a motion from one of you gentlemen to do that. Councilmember Mundy?
Both?
Yeah, we'll do them both together.
I move that we continue Z2 and Z10, which is W3529 and
3529.
220297 until our next zoning meeting on Tuesday, August the 2nd.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion to continue, and city clerk, can we, you can bring that up? Okay. So would you please vote for this item when it comes up? A yes vote will continue both of these items. And that's unanimous. Both of these items will be continued to August the 2nd. Item Z1, please.
Item Z1, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of 1520 Dune Street for reasonable accommodation. This item was continued from the November 4th, 2019, January 6, 2020, June 1, 2020, March 1, 2021, February 2, 2022, and May 2, 2022, city council meetings. A request to withdraw has been received for this item.
Thank you. We've been looking at this for a good while. I'd recognize Councilmember Larson, if you'd like to make a motion to allow this to be withdrawn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, I move approval of the withdrawal request from Oxford House.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Not? Please vote when this comes to fore, yes, if you're in favor, no, of course, if you're against it. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll now go to Z3.
Item Z3, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of David and Jan Properties LLC from RS9 to RS20-S. Property is located on the west side of South Peace Haven Road, south of Foxdale Drive, located in the west ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the May 2, 2022, city council meeting.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing no opposition, I will close the public hearing then, and I'll recognize Councilmember Clark.
I would like a presentation, but I do want to apologize. I continued it because I had COVID, and even though the symptoms were mild, I did not want to jeopardize anyone here. So that's why.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
With that, if the staff could.
Mr. Murphy?
Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. This is a request, it's W3523, for David and Jan Properties to rezon a 9.94-acre property located on the west side of South Peace Haven Road, just south of Foxdale Drive, located in the west ward from RS9 to RS20-S. Here is the subject property, shown on the Legacy Growth Management Area Plan map. It's located in the suburban neighborhoods, GMA 3 Growth Management Area. This is the location map, shown, highlighted in yellow. You'll see that there's an extensive amount of floodplain associated with this parcel. And this is, again, the subject property outlined in yellow, shown on the countywide aerial photos. This is looking along South Peace Haven Road, looking north from the subject property. The subject property is to the left. And this is looking south along Peace Haven Road, the subject property would be to the right. This is looking into the subject property from the existing access point, looking west towards where the activity area would be. And this is looking at the existing neighborhood on Foxdale Drive to the north of the subject property. Again, this is from South Peace Haven Road, looking west into the subject property from the access road that you just saw in the image or two earlier. And this is approximately where the zoning line is located, where that silt fence is in the foreground of the image, looking west. The petitioner's own that parcel as well, but it is not being proposed for rezoning. This is a partial lot rezoning request. And this is on the subject property, looking east back up to South Peace Haven Road. You see a pond in the foreground, you see that access road, and looking back up at Peace Haven Road on top of the hill. And this is a view of the chapel that's already under construction as a accessory structure to the property. This is looking southwest. This is the area plan map from the Southwest Suburban Area Plan update. It's recommending residential land use of the property, and the rezoning petition is consistent with that request. This is the site plan. They are looking to do an event, Special Event Center in the RS20-S zoning request with the request. And this is the site plan, shows the access road, some parking, the chapel that's under construction, a pavilion area, as well as a porch area and a maintenance building for this proposed event center. In analyzing this, staff in the planning board felt that the less intense uses would be allowed on land that is within a floodplain and unsuitable for residential development. The proposed development would allow for the preservation of the natural features, large canopy trees, and environmentally sensitive areas. The proposed site plan does show existing and proposed development away from the adjacent residential properties. This was heard by the planning board at their April 14, 2022, public hearing. There was one speaker in opposition, and their primary opposition dealt with concerns with traffic, the number of events possible, the impact to their property values, and their ability to enjoy their own property. Hearing that, the planning board did vote four to two to recommend approval of this request to the planning board, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Murphy? Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for this a second. I'll make a few comments. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W3523.
Second. Motion second. Councilmember Clark?
This is a strange little thing, on the very, very backside of this property in a floodplain. The guy wants to build a little chapel and a, I guess, a place to have the reception. I felt like it was far enough out of the way, it would not cause disruption to anybody, and that's why I moved in favor of it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote aye, and anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Item Z4?
Item Z4, public hearing on zoning petition of Andrew Coney and Becky Coney from GB to LI-L. Property is located on the northern terminus of Back 40 Drive on the west side of US 52, located in the southeast ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Again, the petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3520.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote aye, anyone opposed, vote no, please. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you.
Item Z5?
Item Z5, public hearing on zoning petition of Riverfront Ventures LLC from RS20 to RS9. Property is located on the east side of Bethany Tobacco Ville Road, south of Kilby Road, located in the north ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll recognize Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W3524.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote aye if you're in favor of this, and no if you're opposed. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z6?
Item Z6, public hearing on zoning petition of J&amp;K Property Management LLC from RS9 to LI-L. Property is located on the north side of Kestrel Mill Road, west of Tanton Park Drive, located in the southwest ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
We do have someone signed up in opposition to this, so we will hold the public hearing. For the proponents, I'd recognize Joe Falk. Yes, if you'd come forward, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please, then you'd have 15 minutes, Mr. Falk.
My name is Joe Falk. I live at 1989 Landover Drive in Clemmons. I think Ms. Cox is going to speak, and I've met with her and her family on several occasions. I'm very sympathetic to their situation. They're in an area that is growing, and it's, it meets the Legacy 2030 Plan. I think the planning board did vote for approval. Their concern mainly is the buffer between the building and the property, and I'm committed to, it's a type III buffer in a 20-foot area, and I'm committing to help them if additional plantings are needed. We've made kind of a verbal agreement to do that.
We would, if you have made an agreement to add additional buffering, we would need for you to, when Mr. Murphy will bring it up, we might need you to come back and verify that. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, thank you. We'll now go to the opponents. Andrea Cox.
My name is Andrea Cox, and I live at 4773 Kestrel Mill Road. My property and my mother's property butts directly up next to this rezoning, so we are in an RS9. It's going to be a light industrial. I'm here speaking on her behalf, my behalf, and a neighbor's behalf who lives across the street. We're not necessarily here in opposition. We have been through this many times. Our road was once a little country dirt road, and now it's got an industrial park with 18-wheelers and all kinds of stuff going up and down it. So, you know, I know it's the city's plan to make it industrial on my side of the road, and so I've pretty much given in to that, but I am where I am, and it's been in my family for six generations, not going anywhere unless somebody offers me enough money to move. And I would move, trust me, if they did. But again, I'm not here to oppose it. I'm just here to stress the importance of a good buffer. This is going to come up right next to my back door, and I would just ask that you would put in a good buffer that would minimize any encroachment on my property. It's my understanding that it was originally a 30-foot buffer. It's being cut down to a 20-foot type III buffer yard with double the plantings, plantings. And we're in agreement with that. I've talked to Joe, and Joe's been very nice and very open with us. And we're in agreement with, you know, if they're going to double the plantings, that it can go down to a 20-foot buffer as long as it creates a sufficient, you know, border. I've also been in communications with Joe about what type of plantings. I know that there are some that are less disease-prone and that grow faster, and he has assured me that he would work with me and the others to plant what might be considered green giant arbor phyties. I think they're less prone to disease, and they grow faster. Our experience on the road is that people don't always say, do what they say they're going to do. We had a developer who put in a nice big industrial park, and we had to come back to you guys and make him put in the buffer. So I'm here really just to state the facts that we want the buffer yard in. We want what they say they're going to put in, and, you know, just don't make any additional changes. Don't try to back out. Just, you know, keep in mind, this is still our house, and this is still our home. So, you know, I just can't reiterate that enough. Put yourself in my position and just enforce what's, what's out there. I mean, I don't know what this type III buffer yard is, but I trust that it'll be sufficient. And I would just also like to ask, because my mom's been asking, what happens if the plants die? You know, because we've had, like I said, so many industrial things go up around here, and we've seen other buffers that have just, like, been planted. Nobody waters them, and the trees die, and then there's no buffer. So I don't know how that works, but that was a concern of one of the property owners. So I think that's pretty much sums it up.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Anyone else for the opposition? All right. Mr. Falk, you would have three minutes for rebuttal, if you wanted to rebut anything or add anything.
I just want to clarify something. I didn't mean I was going to do an additional buffer. I was going to add to the plantings that were required, as she stated. I misstated. But it is, and when we went before the planning board, the 30 was supposed to be a 20. The planning board didn't have it right, and they corrected it to come before y'all tonight. But that's what happened. It was a 20-foot with a type III double planting.
Double planting.
It doesn't affect where the building, the building has to be the same distance as from residential. It's 40 feet, so it doesn't affect where the building goes at all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Cox, would you like to add anything on the rebuttal?
No, I mean, that's my opinion as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. I would ask Mr. Murphy to give the report of the planning board, please.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and the council. Yes, this is a request of J&amp;K Property Management LLC to rezon a 1.19-acre tract along Kestrel Mill Road from RS9 to LIL. Here is the subject property, shown on the Legacy Growth Management Area Map in GMA 3 Suburban Neighborhoods. This is the subject property, highlighted in yellow. Again, there, shown along Kestrel Mill Road, in between industrial property and residential property. There's a little wedge of residential there in between commercial and the existing industrial. This is the subject property, highlighted in yellow, shown on the countywide aerial photos. This is looking at the subject property standing on Kestrel Mill Road. And this is looking east along Kestrel Mill Road, back towards Jonestown Road. And this is standing in Kestrel Mill Road, looking west along Kestrel Mill Road, and the industrial development would be further down the road here. This is the subject property, shown on the Southwest Suburban Area Plan. It's recommended for industrial development for the entire area. The request is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy and the Southwest Suburban Area Plan. The proposed zoning is a good transition from GI zoning in the west to the HB zoning in the east, and the request proposes additional vegetative screening to mitigate visual impacts to Kestrel Mill Road and the neighboring residential properties. The permit that's in front of you, well, let me go. Heard by the planning board at their May 12, 2022, public hearing, there were no speakers in opposition at that meeting, although the, the person who was in opposition was at that meeting but had not signed up to speak in opposition. The planning board did recommend 90 for approval of the request. In the permit, there are two conditions of approval. One is for a 20-foot wide type III buffer with double the plantings prescribed in the ordinance. And there's a second condition of approval that requires a street yard to be installed along the subject property with a type II buffer yard, I believe. It's a 20-foot street yard planted with 20-foot type III buffer yard plantings, along with a three-foot tall berm. Just to give you an idea, for a 20-foot wide buffer yard, the normal planting rate per 100 linear feet would be two deciduous trees, 18 primary evergreens, such as Nellie Stevens Holly, you know, something that will become a large visual buffer, and then 12 supplemental evergreen shrubs per 100 linear feet. So they have agreed to do four deciduous trees, 36 primary evergreen, and 24 shrubs per 100 linear feet along that property line to the east, and then do a type III buffer yard as their street yard along Kestrel Mill Road to try to kind of screen the impacts of the proposed future industrial development. So with, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Chris, would you comment on the question about maintenance of the shrubbery?
Yes, whenever, anytime, any type of vegetation is installed for a requirement, whether it be for a rezoning action, or whether it be for standard approvals through our office for development permits, any of that vegetation that dies, they just need to contact our office in planning. Our zoning enforcement staff will take a look at that, and if those trees are required and they have died, then they will have to be replaced.
Have to be replaced. All right, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Murphy? I do need to close the public hearing while I'm thinking about it as well. Councilmember Sipio?
At whose expense are those shrubs and trees replaced?
That would be a contractual agreement between, you know, again, sometimes it really depends on what the lease says. Ultimately, it's the responsibility of the property owner. Now, they may have something in their lease, if, if someone, if it's a ground lease and someone is leasing that space from them, there may be something in their contract that says they have to do that, but ultimately, in our eyes, it falls on the property owner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mundy, recognize you.
It sounds like all of your concerns have been met and, and written down so that it's not just a verbal agreement. So given that, I would move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W3525.
There's a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote aye, and anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Mundy. Go to item Z7, please.
Item Z7, public hearing on zoning petition of William Harriston from NB-S to NB-L. Property is located on the north side of Old Greensboro Road, west of Waterworks Road, located in the east ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? The proponent is here, proponents are here, if there are any questions. All right, I'll close the public hearing, and I'd recognize Councilwoman Sipio.
Yes, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3526.
Second.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think a person had their, did you have your hand up in the red?
No.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Sipio has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilwoman Sipio. Item Z8?
Item Z8, public hearing on zoning petition of Harvest Landing LLC from LO to PB-L. Property is located on the west side of South Spruce Street, north of Salem Parkway, located in the northwest ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? The petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Yes, you're opposed to it? Okay, yes. Thank you so much. All right, seeing no opposition, I will close the public hearing. I recognize Councilwoman McIntosh.
I move for approval of, one, a statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W3530.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussions of this item? All right. Those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Has everybody voted? There it is. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Go to item Z9, please.
Item Z9, public hearing on special use permit of Lett Estate LLC for a parking reduction for a restaurant without drive-through service in the growth management area. Property is located on the, on the southwest side of Brookstown Avenue, southeast of Burke Street, located in the northwest ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. This is a public hearing regarding the petitioner's application for a parking reduction for a restaurant without drive-through service in the growth management area, too. The process for issuing a special use permit is quasi-judicial. Speakers must present testimony and evidence under oath. Speakers should rely on their own information and not base their remarks on what someone else said or knows. The applicant and other witnesses have the right to ask questions of each other, and all testimony and evidence must relate to the four findings of fact that the council must make. All testament, testimony, and evidence must relate to the special use permit requested. As it relates to the quasi-judicial hearings, the council is prohibiting from considering opinion testimony from non-expert witnesses, and particularly testimony as how the proposed use would impact the value of neighboring properties. Additionally, council must only consider evidence provided at the hearing. Communications with members of the city council outside of the hearing are prohibited and must be disclosed, if any. The four findings of fact are shown on the screen now, and the process also requires the council to issue a special use permit only when it's able to make an affirmative finding as to each of the four findings. The applicant has the burden of proof as to the second and third finding. The opposition has the burden of proof with respect to the first and fourth findings. So I'd ask, anyone who wishes to speak or intends to speak on this item, please come forward so we can swear you in. Thank you. Is there anyone in opposition to this special use permit? All right. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'd recognize Councilwoman McIntosh.
Shall I ask for a report first?
Sure, absolutely. Mr. Murphy, could you give us a report of the planning board?
And Mayor, since he's under oath, let him go ahead and testify with the public hearing open and close it after he finishes.
I'm sorry. Say again.
Have Mr. Murphy, since he's testifying under oath, testify during the public hearing, and you can close the public hearing after he testifies.
We'll leave the public hearing open till Mr. Murphy gives his brilliant testimony.
Thank you again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council. This is a request for a parking reduction for a 0.28-acre property on the southwest side of Brookstown Avenue, southeast of Burke Street, located in the northwest ward. Here is the subject property, shown on the Legacy Growth Management Area Plan map in GMA 2 Urban Neighborhoods. Here's the subject property, highlighted in yellow. You can tell part of the property appears to be vacant, and there's a building that is on part of the park. is on part of the parcel as well. They're located along Brookstown, just to the southeast of Burke Street. This is the subject property outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial photography image. Again, you can see the development that's taken place in the area, and again, this is primarily a developed parcel with an existing building and parking slash drive aisle area on the parcel, very narrow parcel. This is the subject property looking southwest from Brookstown Avenue. Real narrow building and basically a drive aisle to go from the rear back out to Brookstown and vice versa. This is looking northwest of Brookstown Avenue, the subject property to the left. This is looking southeast down Brookstown Avenue. Again, the subject property will be to the right in this image. This is looking northeast across the subject property, across Brookstown Avenue, the recently constructed residential building there. This is looking north at the rear and side of the subject property. The image, the light block image, is the subject property. That's the building, and that's the access aisle that comes up from the rear up to Brookstown. And this is looking northwest up the alley from the rear of the subject property. The subject property is just to the right. That's the building. That's looking back up to Burke Street. So you enter from Burke Street, come down, and then take a left and enter, exit onto Brookstown. And this is just looking southeast from the backside of the building to the property line. This is the area plan map. It is identified as office and commercial in the Burke Street-Brookstown area from the south-central West Salem area plan update. This is the site plan that was submitted as part of the request. You can see the existing building shown in green. They can provide four parking spaces in the rear, but the remainder of the site is essentially tied up in access, and there isn't any additional area to provide any additional parking. The city council findings, the first finding that the use was not materially endangered the public health or safety, have located where proposed and developed according to the application and plan as submitted and approved. Under staff findings, the proposed use restaurant without drive-through service is not a threat to the public health or safety. There are numerous other restaurants within the fourth Burke Activity Center area. Further, no expansion to the existing building is proposed. Just as an aside, council has approved generally, I believe, all of these requests in the area that deal with parking reductions. Second finding is that the use meets all required conditions and specifications to the extent possible. The site is compliant with all UDO requirements. This permit is necessary because the proposed use makes the site ineligible for an exemption granted to other non-residential buildings in the same area. The site does have access to four off-street parking spaces. Just as a little bit of additional context to that finding, all uses, all commercial uses in commercial structures that were built prior to 1988 do not have to meet the parking requirement except for the use restaurant and for the use sweepstakes. So in this case, since they are proposing a restaurant, they have to meet the parking requirement or seek a parking reduction through the special use permit process. Under finding three, that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. Planning staff is not qualified to have the expertise to make property value determinations, so we make no finding there. So you would have to utilize other testimony to have a finding that it fails that finding. And then finally, fourth, that the location and character of the use that developed according to the application and plan submitted and approved will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with Legacy 2030. Legacy 2030 recommends concentrating development within established commercial areas and for the adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized non-residential structures. The proposed project accomplishes these recommendations. In summary, the request would reuse the existing building with no expansion proposed because the proposed use is restaurant without drive-through service. It is not eligible for the parking exemption pertaining to changes of use in GMA's one and two. The existing structure was built in 1955. The site is very narrow and has limited off-street parking in the rear, which is accessed by an alley. Otherwise, the site is compliant with all UDO requirements. At their May 12, 2022 meeting, the planning board recommended approval of the site plan, and staff recommends approval of the special use permit. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Councilmember Sipio.
Yes, Mr. Murphy, when we looked at the pictures in the alley or the, looks like where you drive from Brookstown to Burke Street, is that where people would be parking or not?
If you look at that image there, coming from Burke Street towards the subject property, you know, there are some, there's some parking available to some of the other properties along there. When you get to the subject property, which is approximately where that arrow is.
Yes.
Oops, I'm going the wrong way. Essentially, those, looking south right there, looking at, those are the four parking spaces that are available on the site, and that's it.
So driving into that, none of that driveway would be available for any parking?
Correct, due to the narrowness of it.
Because of the, okay.
All right, thank you very much, and I will now close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Pardon me.
I know that there is a good bit of on-street parking on Burke Street, which is very clearly within walking distance, but is there, this face is Brookstown, is that right?
Correct.
Is there any on-street parking on Brookstown?
I don't believe so. I believe Aaron might have the aerial photo pulled up. There is, but not on the subject property side of the street. It's on the opposite side of the street. But I mean, there would be some available, but you can't commit it to them, so.
And then in conjunction with what's on Burke Street, I think we're good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Again, I have closed the public hearing, and I'll recognize Councilwoman McIntosh.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion and then a remark after the vote.
Yes, please.
I move based on the staff report, testimony and evidence presented at the public hearing that, one, the city council affirmed the four findings as required by Section 3-2.13E 6A of Unified Development Ordinances. Two, the city council approved the site plan that is included with this special use permit request, along with the conditions included in the special use permit and staff report. And, three, the city council issued a special use permit for Lead State, LLC, for parking reduction for a restaurant without drive-through service in growth management area two.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilwoman McIntosh. Now, go.
I'm sorry, remark and then a question. So the concerns about parking, I think this is an instance where we're giving the public what they're asking for, which is a public, or not a public, but a walkable amenity. Within a frisbee throw of this place are going to be roughly 800 housing units plus overflow from the ballpark. So when we're looking at things for, places for people to eat that live there, this is going to, this is not going to be drive-to. People are not going to be getting in their cars and driving to it unless they're already downtown for some other type of a thing. So I think this is a huge amenity, and I think it'll do very well in that location. The second thing is a question that I'd like council to think about. This is the third time that one of these special use restaurant things have come up since I've been on council nine years. They've all been in my ward, and we sit here, and we have very little leeway from which to judge. Staff brings us these essentially buttoned up, ready to go. We have questions around it, but essentially, we really don't have the ability to question the legal standing of, you know, the responses. I'd like to hear from city attorney whether we could make this a staff approval versus the special use process.
I think that is allowable, and that's certainly something we could consider and bring back in terms of a text amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman McIntosh. All right, we'll now move to item Z 11.
Item Z 11, resolution urging the United States Congress to enact the Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Dividend Act of 2021. This item was recommended by the Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee with three in favor and one abstaining. This item was moved no consideration at the May 16, 2022 city council meeting.
As you know, there's an active motion on this, and typically on no consideration, we don't discuss it, so I would call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have anything on our screen.
It's not coming up, Sandy.
Do we have?
Do we need a motion and second?
Do we need a motion? A motion?
We already got a motion on the table.
There's already a motion on the floor, just need to vote.
It's going to come up. It's coming.
Who made the motion last time? There it is.
It's coming.
Motion passes, seven in favor, one opposed. Councilwoman Clark voting in the negative. Thank you, and now item Z 12.
Item Z 12, Mayor joins recommendation for reapportment to the City-Council Utility Commission. Yvonne H. Heinz, terms expiring June 2027.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, I'd just like to take a moment and just say that I did issue a press advisory this afternoon after discussing with some of you as well, just making a very strong suggestion that our citizens consider wearing a mask inside, particularly when they're in meetings with large numbers of individuals or in closed quarters, and also suggesting, of course, that if you're not vaccinated, then now would be a good time to get vaccinated, or if you've been vaccinated, to get boosted. So that's going out today, and just wanted to emphasize that again. Any, Councilmember Sipio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I want to thank all of you for coming out on Saturday to the ribbon cutting of our Winston Lake Park, our new shelter and the fishing pier, and all of the residents who've come out. We want more to come and use that wonderful park, and I thank you to the recreation center, I mean, the recreation staff and their department for an excellent job for the ribbon cutting as well as for our flight festival, which was a wonderful success. And I also want to recognize our marketing department that covered both of those events in a very well-done way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sipio. Congratulations, both of the events were wonderful. Customers, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we are adjourned.